I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'm going to break up the socializing. I'm sorry. Thank you. Lauralee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Here.
Denise Chapman.
Here.
Amy Doran.
Dawn Kirk.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
Alexandra Lessin.
Here.
Nancy Rumpf.
Here.
Thank you Lauralee. Nancy, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nancy and Stu. If you would please read the mission statement.
Sure. Thompson School District will be a school district that empowers, challenges, and inspires students, faculty, staff, parents, school leaders, and community members to learn, achieve, and excel.
Thank you, Stu. Okay, the first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and it's for today, September 17th, 2025. Are there any changes to the agenda for today?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to add an agenda item under discussion related to legislation, and it will be brief.
Okay, so as a motion you want to add?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So I'm going to hold off any discussion until at the point in time when we're going to move it to, and we'll put it in the discussion section of our agenda. Okay? All right, thank you, Stu. So I would like a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of Stu's request.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. So first with Stu, and then Dawn with second. Did you get the first one? Okay. All right. We need to... Yeah, vote. Roll call over there, please, lady.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessin.
Aye.
Nancy Rumpf.
Aye.
Thank you Lauralee. And it was a passed full approval. All right, approval of the minutes. We have three of those tonight. We have our regular meeting, August 20th, which is the first one that we were going to be going to do. Does anybody have any changes or corrections to the minutes of the August 20th? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes for August 20th, 2025.
I'll move.
Thank you Nancy. Second? I heard three, I think. Who was down there?
Denise.
Denise, okay, so we'll go with Nancy and Denise. Lauralee, would you please call the roll?
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessin.
Aye.
Nancy Rumpf.
Aye.
Thank you. The next one is the approval of the minutes for our special meeting that we had on September 3rd. This was the one prior to our study session. Does anybody have any changes or corrections to the minutes of the special meeting on September 3rd? Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve the minutes for September 3rd, 2025.
So moved.
Thank you Dawn.
Second.
And Alexandra. Lauralee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessin.
Aye.
Nancy Rumpf.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. And then the third one is the approval of the minutes for the study session on September 3rd, 2025. Any changes? Anybody have any changes or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes for September 3rd, 2025.
So moved. I'll second.
So it was Dawn, and then...
I don't...
Nancy. Okay, you can pick.
You can go with me, I guess.
Okay, Lauralee, please call the roll. And go with Nancy. It was...
Dawn and Nancy.
Dawn and Nancy.
Okay. Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessin.
Aye.
Nancy Rumpf.
Aye.
Thank you, and all three of our approval for the minutes passed. All right, public participation, so we'll turn to the superintendent's report first.
Thank you very much. Couple items for us to review. On Saturday, September 13th, Thompson Education Foundation hosted a homecoming dress giveaway, which was a free event for TSD High School students to ensure that each participant was able to attend with beautiful attire and confidence. A total of 63 dresses were distributed, so thank you to the foundation for supporting our students. Next, on Wednesday, September 24th, coming up soon, the Thompson Career Campus will be hosting their open house at 5:00 PM to celebrate the launch of the new EMT, Emergency Medical Technician Pathway. We're inviting the community to come to tour the new facility, but also to learn more about both that program and all of our other additional career education opportunities for students. And the next one, very exciting, we actually have some people in the audience to help us celebrate this. As you all know, last month, I shared that Namakua Elementary had earned the 2025 All-Star Award by the Alliance for a Healthier Generation for achieving excellence in all nine areas of school health. But in addition to that, Big Thompson, Centennial, and Trusket Elementary Schools were all also recognized as America's healthiest schools. So for example, Big Thompson was recognized for supporting school health services and implementing a local school wellness policy. Centennial Elementary was recognized in the categories of supporting school health services, strengthening social emotional health and learning, and cultivating staff well-being. Trusket was recognized for supporting school health services, and as I mentioned, Namakua received the All-Star Award by earning recognition in all nine of the categories. I do want to invite all of these folks who are here to celebrate their school. If you'd stand up, we're going to probably gather you together, because I think we like to get a group photo if we can. So can we all get all those folks, all of our folks that I just mentioned from those different schools? So come on. You guys will come up in front of the rope here, and we'll...
Yeah, we'll join you.
Yeah.
Is this yours?
Yeah.
Okay, mine's kind of reddish like that, or seems to me, or maybe my old one was.
Next item on my report is some congratulations to Thompson School District Board President Barb Cruz on receiving the McGuffey Award at the Casby Region 4 Meeting in Greeley on August 21st. McGuffey Award recipients are recognized for outstanding service to their school district's Board of Education. Barb was honored for her unwavering commitment to serving all children and her passionate advocacy for every student. As president, she has helped guide the board through challenging times, has strengthened communication, has supported student success across the district. I know Barb would say this, that she feels like this is a team award.
Yes, that's right.
But we want to say congratulations to you, and I believe Mike would like to get a group photo with all of you together regarding this one.
The award. It's been in my bag since that night.
This week, I also, I had the opportunity to visit with a couple of our community partners. First, earlier this week, I was able to visit the after-school program at Lago Vista Community. Nancy and Amy Doran both joined me for that event. We had a chance to walk through the after-school program, visit with the staff, visit with students, visit with volunteers. I will say, they are doing something pretty amazing there. They identified a need in their community, and they did something about it. They didn't just talk about it, they went and took action. I think lots of communities around the country should see the great thing they're doing, because they truly are meeting a need. They have about 30 or so students that they're meeting with on a regular basis after school, from elementary through high school. They have tutors. There is a need for more tutors. So if any of you want to be, sign up to be tutors, they really are looking for more, especially at the middle school and high school level. Just amazing opportunity for these kids after school to have a safe place to both get academic support, but also learn how to interact with their peers in a positive way. It was just phenomenal in every way. Second, just this morning, I was able to spend some time at our Kids Pack, the Kids Pack facility. Meeting with both, again, staff and the volunteers who do the work. If you have not seen this operation in action, you don't fully understand the scope of the things that Kids Pack is doing, and the amount of food they are packing up every single week and getting out to so many of our kids. It is truly an inspiring thing. Again, another group that saw a need, and rather than talking about it, took action. It is, it's phenomenal. I think I'm going to be going out there. There's a day when Mountain View High School football team is going to be doing some packing of bags. I'm going to go out and hopefully join them on that. Again, amazing, and just so thankful that we have groups like this serving our kids. So now, it's my opportunity to recognize and celebrate some new folks who are either new to our district or new to their roles. So as I introduce each of you, if you'll make your way to the podium, and we'll give you an opportunity to say a few words. We'll start out with Brandy Greaves, the new Executive Director of Secondary Schools.
Since 2017, Ms. Greaves has served as the principal of Turner Middle School in Berthoud. Prior to that, she worked as the principal of Groveport-Madison Middle School and Middle School North in Columbus, Ohio. Her highlights of her career include service as a middle school language arts instructor, a high school English teacher, and a high school assistant principal. She's earned a Bachelor of Arts in English with a minor in Spanish from Colorado State, and also holds a Master's Degree in Educational Leadership from Nova Southeastern University in Las Vegas. Brandy.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Heller. I would like to thank you for this opportunity to continue to serve our district. I am honored and looking forward to continuing to serve our students, staff, and community in this capacity. Good evening.
Next up, Mr. Justin Blick, principal at Ivy Stockwell Elementary. As most of you know, Mr. Blick served as the principal of BF Kitchen Elementary School in Loveland, a position he had held since 2012 before joining Ivy Stockwell in July. His experience also includes an elementary school teaching time, dean of students, and assistant principal. In total, Mr. Blick has 22 years of service in education. Justin holds a Bachelor's Degree in Interdisciplinary Studies and a Master's Degree in Educational Leadership from the University of Northern Colorado. Justin?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Heller. It is very good to be with you this evening. I was so nervous about not saying Dr. Schaefer. I'm going to just be honest, like it's been on my mind all day long. So, Dr. Heller, it has been a privilege for me to serve in the last 14 years here in Thompson School District, and it truly has grown to be my home as an educator. And I am so excited and honored to be able to serve the Berthoud community in the same capacity. You may not know, but this is, we are actually celebrating the 50th anniversary, or the 50th anniversary of the opening of Ivy Stockwell Elementary. And so we're very excited, and it adds a new perspective as we think about what has been in terms of that tradition of excellence and what will be, how we can continue to ensure that our students will thrive for the next 50 years. Not that I will be there for 50 years, but that they will strive, and that we're laying the foundation that they can be successful. So I'm very excited for this opportunity. I thank you for that, and for the opportunity to work with you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next up, Becky Rusin, principal at Berthoud Elementary School. Ms. Rusin recently served as the principal of Windmill Springs School on the Franklin McKinley School District in San Jose, California. Her career experience also includes service as a general education teacher, a teacher on special assignment, and an assistant principal. Becky earned a Bachelor of Arts in History from California Polytechnic, and a Master's Degree in Educational Administration from Concordia University Irvine.
Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Heller. I'm so excited to be here in Thompson School District. I think it's a wonderful school district. And Berthoud Elementary has been so wonderful. I felt so welcomed by the community and the kids. I just feel like I fit in. It's a home away from home now. And just, I'm so blessed to be there with that staff and those students and those families. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, Vivian Pankow is interim principal of Peak View Academy at Conrad Ball. And I think many of you know that Vivian served as the assistant principal at Peak View Academy, a role she has held since July of '23. Her career in education also includes experience as a teacher, educational technology coach, academic and behavioral interventionist, and as interim principal at Mary Blair Elementary School. She earned a Bachelor of Science in Elementary Inclusive Education from Minnesota State University, Moorhead, and a Master of Arts in Educational Leadership and Principal-Lysenger from the University of Northern Califor... Colorado, not California, in Greeley. Vivian?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Heller. Thank you so much for this opportunity to serve in this role as the interim principal of Peak View Academy. I am thrilled to continue on in this capacity with our school. As we roll into year three, we've done a lot of great work to build positive culture, to set traditions, and to really grow as a school community. And I'm thrilled to continue that work. And I am so excited to continue on in the school community that I have so much commitment to and passion for. So thank you.
Thank you. Last but not least, Shannon Brennan, our new principal of Centennial Elementary School. Mrs. Brennan is new to the Thompson School District, but most recently, she served as the Director of Teaching, Learning, and Assessment for the North Wasco County School District in the Dalles, Oregon. She's very familiar with the education system in Colorado, having previously worked for 17 years as a teacher in the St. Verane Valley School District. Shannon earned a Bachelor's Degree in Sociology from St. Joseph's University, and also holds two Master's Degrees, one in elementary education and another in leadership and educational organizations from the University of Colorado Boulder and the University of Colorado Denver. Shannon?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Heller. I am honored to serve as principal at Centennial and be with students and staff every day. This is day 12? But in those very, in a very short span of time, I've noticed a part of me has come back alive, come back to life, just being back in a building with students and staff. So thank you very much for having me, and I'm just really excited to serve Thompson School District.
Thank you, Shannon. In terms of my report, that's really all I had for tonight, other than to say that I actually had some time last week to spend at Namakua Elementary. And got the chance to walk the school with the principal, go into classrooms, see what's actually happening in that building beyond just the healthy schools side of things. Very impressed with everything I saw. Lots of students hands-on, engaging, and digging into, you know, into content, asking questions, collaborating with each other. And I'll tell you one thing I didn't see much of, which I thought was okay, was I didn't see many kids on screens. I saw lots of kids one-on-one interacting with each other and with their teacher, which was, which was great. There's always a great value in, for the tool of technology in our classrooms, but we also really want to find the balance of kids being able to interact with each other with content, and that's what I saw a lot of when I was in the school last week. So I'm looking forward to their presentation, which I believe is next up on our agenda. So thank you.
All right. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Heller. We are honored to be able to share with you what we are working on at Namakua, both instructionally and climate and culture. So I want to give you a little bit of background on who we are as a building. In 2019, when I started at Namakua, we actually merged two schools together due to the closure of Vamburun. So we have a very diverse population at our school. We are the only elementary school that has both an ALC and an ILC. So we serve quite a few students with special needs. We have about 230 kids at our school. About 3% of them are multilingual students. 15% are chronically absent, which is a decrease from 33% two years ago. 18.4% are minorities. 25% of our population has an IEP. And 43, almost 44% of our students qualify for free and reduced meals. Over the last four years, since I've been at Namakua, we have received four different awards. Four years ago, we received the Governor's Distinguished Improvement Award for our growth on CMASS. Three years ago, we received our first America's Healthiest School Award in three categories. Last year, we received it in six, and then this year, as was stated, we received it in nine. The only school in Colorado to receive that award. So I have some of my staff here with me to help present. I have our four-five combo, so we're navigating through what that looks like. Combo teachers, Kim, Erica, and Cassie, they're going to share with you about depth and complexity, which is one for our instructional strategies. And then Autumn Anderson is our dean of students and instructional coach, and she's going to share with you the climate and culture work we are working on.
All right, our school is embracing depth and complexity for the second year. Last year, we were trained in it, and this year, we're really diving deep. And it is an instructional framework that uses 11 thinking strategies. And these strategies guide students in how to approach and process learning beyond the surface level recall. It also helps students have a deeper understanding of the content.
And why. It gives access to all learners by differentiating instruction, engage all learners, and promote critical thinking and analytical skills.
And we also wanted to share with you how we implement this in our school. So a lot of teachers have used it in creating our classroom agreements. You can see we have some different posters and projects that we use it for. And then also, we have our learning walk that we use it for. So today, we had our staff was walking through, and we were observing each other, and we had the learning walk document that we used, which also mimics our principal's observation document as well. All of those questions that we have on those documents are framed with depth and complexity questions, so.
Just to build on that, with depth and complexity, it's not just something we do, it's who we are. We encourage children to critically think, and we build capacity within our educators to be able to feel confident in doing so every single day. In regards to our climate and culture, yes, we're a bit competitive at Namakua. And we wanted to be number one, and we got it. So in addition to building on our efforts to get our award, right? We are building our climate and culture by implementing conflict resolution, teaching students how to speak to one another, and then again, building that capacity with educators to say, hmm, let me take a moment and teach you that skill, which there is clearly a deficit. In addition to that, we have sensory paths that we've put throughout our whole building. We have one in our intermediate, and then another in our primary wings. And then we have a sensory room where students can really regulate themselves and feel better to go back into the classroom to access their learning. In addition to that, we have really built knowledge within our teachers for our professional development days by implementing ways we can change our affective language as well. So we're here to increase the skills related to social emotional learning and students and staff. In addition to that, as a building, we're increasing our sense of belonging, right? This has been an initiative that we have driven as a community, and very much so at Namakua. So some of the things that we have implemented include putting things in our PBIS structure that includes not only our depth and complexity lens, but equity as well. So you'll see that within our pause reward systems. You'll see that in our pledge, where we're being more equitable to all peoples within our building. And then when we look at social emotional regulation, we acknowledge that we all feel different things, and that we are going to accept it, and how we're going to persevere through that, just like we'd want any adult in our community to have those same skills. We have built reflection sheets for students to look upon their learning and say, and say, hey, what can I do differently next time mistakes will happen? How do we move forward from that? And then, we also have implemented our warm welcomes to make sure that not only do students feel a sense of their own belonging from pictures that we've taken from our own children, but that each child is greeted by an educator at Ednamakwa every day, knowing that they are loved and cared for.
So, moving forward for this year, we are working on implementing Benchmark, our new literacy program, and we're continuing our work with ALN and in implementing Envision. This is our-- year three is our district. We are also continuing implementing depth and complexity. This year, we're focusing on SEL and math. All of us are trainers now of depth and complexity with also the support of our GE department. And so, we learned you don't do two news at once. So, we're not implementing it during Benchmark right now. We're trying to learn that program. And then continuing our Tier One and Tier Two restorative practices that are so important for our students with life skills. Do you guys have any questions for us?
I have just one. The first few slides, you had a bunch of icons at the bottom. Are those related to your--
That is depth and complexity. So, we have-- and you guys are going to have to help me remember them all. We have Language of the Discipline. We have Details, Rules, and Patterns, Trends, Unanswered Questions, Ethics, Big Idea, Over Time, Multiple Perspectives, and Across Disciplines.
Perfect.
Yes, and they are purposely visual pieces too for our non-readers, so they can see that they can still access that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Questions, other board members?
I am.
Okay, let's just start down here first, and we'll go this way. Any questions? Alexandra?
Can you give like a sort of brief example of how you would integrate the depth and complexity into a lesson? Or is kind of what it looks like?
Would you like to share?
Do you want to go to one of those slides?
So, one of them that we did, if you want to go back to that last slide, on the, your guys' right corner, there's the triangle and a lot of writing. That is our classroom agreements. And so, you have at the top, the big idea of what is it that we want to see? With, it's kind of like our norms and our rules in our classroom. What is it we want to see? What's the big idea of having classroom agreements? And then, each of those pillars is a different detail, and it's really naming, how are we showing respect, ownership, acceptance, and responsibility, which is our PBIS motto? And then, at the bottom is the rules and patterns. And that is, what do we do when those are broke? And so, they went through and did that as a lesson.
Nancy?
I just, I had a question on the sensory room. Is that for, like, starting from kindergarten all the way to fifth grade? And then, as kids are going through the elementary school, is part of it, part of it as they're learning the sensory room, is there also additional learning of how do you do the self-regulation when you don't have a sensory room? So, I'd just be curious, because I don't, I don't think middle school has the sensory room.
No. And we have regulation stations within each of our classrooms too. Our sensory room is, students are supported with either myself, our Dean of Students, our counselor, our SEL specialist, and we go in there and help them regulate. They're not in there on their own. And then, we're always reflecting at the end on what can they do as they walk into class to be ready to learn.
So, then, in theory, by the time they go to sixth grade, they're basically equipped to deal with it on their own?
That's our hope.
That's really, that's, I like that. That's good.
Yes.
In theory.
In theory.
Well, as the healthiest school in Colorado, tell me what changes you've noticed in your students within the last two or three years?
I would say, you know, and it's always a work in progress, and we have different kids every year. But we are very dedicated to our SEL block to be able to have kids be able to talk about their feelings and be able to problem solve. Like, that's a life skill that we want our kids to be able to do. Sometimes, that's with support from one of us, and sometimes, it's on our own. We have seen kids go through our thinking strategies without us on the playground with each other and using the language that we use.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to spend a second on restorative, and congratulations. I, I love that you're adding to it, right? We built this foundation, and now, we're adding to it. And so, I just would love to get to see that in practice and wonder if, if this worksheet is one, is just one of the ways? Or is this like the anchor that you're working on?
This is one of our many strategies that we use, because as we know, kids are all different and how they access learning and their needs are all very different. So, we have to differentiate for some of our kids. So, and you guys, any of you are welcome to come to Namakwa to check it out in action.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is our board committee reports. And I asked them to just think about if there was a committee that they have that has started meeting this year or an event that they demonstrated, that demonstrates an activity they saw participated in the school. I'm going to go first, and then, I'm just going to let the rest of us just go down the line. Dr. Heller talked about the, not the prom dresses, the homecoming dresses. And I went and spent my Saturday here at the ad building helping girls, high school girls try on, pick out. Some of them had their moms with them, some came as a group. But it was really fun to watch them. I understand we had a little bit of extra glitter on the floor, because these dresses, if you shake them, all the glitter falls off, and it was kind of all over. But it's such a worthwhile event. And, you know, this is the first time we've ever done homecoming, and we probably won't do it again, because we really, our goal is prom. And so, we've now told people that we wouldn't take short dresses. We'll only take the long dresses, because that's what kids want for the prom time. So, in April, I think, is when we'll do the same thing, but it'll be prom dresses. And it's not here at the ad building, it's out at Centerra in a closed store that they let us use. So, thanks for introducing that. It was what I wanted to share. Okay, I'm going to start down here with Dawn.
So, I'll give my update on DAC, which meets next Tuesday in this room. And we meet once a month. We have a new chair and co-chair. And they're really, you know, hashing through, what do they want for this new year? And how do we really get all the things covered that we have to get done, which is a lot? And then also really have a chance to have more organic conversation, more kind of just voices in the room talking about not only what we have to talk about, but what isn't getting talked about that they are there for, right? Most people come to that room because there's something that they're really passionate about or they care about or they have questions about. And it's, it can be a real challenge to make sure that that happens with everything that we have to cover. And so, it was really interesting to have the first meeting with the new group, rolling out what their plan is and changing around, building relationships, and taking some more time for that than I think we've done in quite a while. So, I'm excited. And then, they're going to be submitting written reports for, to go with the board packets. For anybody who's, can't make the meeting but is curious, they'll be that attached to all of our meetings going forward.
Stu?
So, I'm going to take us back in time just a little bit. The board will remember this, and if any of you watched our last study session, you know that we talked about several resolutions that were going to be presented at the Colorado Association of School Boards Fall Conference. And I want to tell you about something that happened in regard to one of those resolutions. One of the resolutions that we talked about was proposed by a school district in southern Colorado. And they were suggesting that we should separate alternative education campus data, and for us, that would be Ferguson High School data, from all other performance data. We discussed it as a board. We got input from Sarah Rasmussen, our Executive Director of Learning Services. And as we concluded discussing this particular resolution, I asked Sarah if she would be willing to write a paragraph that I could share during the public comment part at the conference, and she did. I shared it at the conference, and this is probably the sentence that was most important. She wrote, and we had agreed to this as a board, "If we're committing to the operation in support of an AEC, so an alternative education campus, then we are committing to being held responsible for their success and maintaining a culture of inclusivity for them as well as for the rest of our students." So, I wasn't the first person to speak about this resolution at the conference. And the three speakers who preceded me, I think, were kind of leading the rest of the delegates toward adopting this resolution or allowing it to go forward. So, when it was my turn to speak, I just read Sarah's paragraph, which concluded with a sentence that I just read to you. And I could kind of sense from the non-verbal communication from people in the audience that, hmm, they hadn't really thought about it that way. There were three people who spoke after me, and they concurred with what I said. When the resolution came up for a vote as to whether it would advance to the next level, it was voted down. It failed. And probably what meant just as much to me was when a friend of mine who teaches, or pardon me, is a member of the Board of Boulder Valley, Board of Education, when he said, "What you said, what you read to us really turned the tide." And he said, "I want to thank you for that, because I didn't agree with the resolution." And he said, "The other thing that I'm going to do is you mentioned that your board had discussed this and the other resolutions. We've never done that before." And he said, "I'm going to take that back to our board and urge them to do that next year as we move forward with this." So, first of all, thanks, Sarah, for giving me the ammunition that I needed in order to support what the board wanted to do. And that's what I wanted to share with you.
Thank you, Stu. Nancy?
I haven't had committees, so I'm right, I'm reading something I wrote about First Amendment and Constitution Day. "The First Amendment is the cornerstone of our Constitution, and it is uniquely American. This sacred right was established with the signing of the Constitution 238 years ago today, and America became a beacon of hope for all the world to see. The First Amendment doesn't exist to protect the speech you agree with. It exists to protect the speech you disagree with. Liberty is messy, because it requires individuals to take responsibility for their choices. Government was never meant to do for us what we can do for ourselves. And we must never forget, government cannot create utopia. The cost of that illusion is always the same, your liberty, your freedom. Since being elected in 2021, I have witnessed the erosion of respect for differing beliefs, and I've seen how hostility and division have spread in our schools and our community. For decades, the classrooms were places where children learned to read, write, do math, study history, explore science, and develop skills to become informed, productive citizens. Today, too many classrooms are shifting away from that purpose. They're increasingly used to push ideology, promote social change, and to supplant parents with trusted adults. Instead of fostering curiosity and knowledge, classrooms are becoming breeding grounds for intolerance, division, and hate. Students who hold different views are often forced into silence. And now, we're left mourning the shocking political assassination of Charlie Kirk, a husband, a father, a son, and a devout Christian. His life was cut short by a young man consumed by hate for everything that Charlie represented. Whether you agreed with Charlie Kirk or not, we should all agree on this. No one should ever be assassinated for their political or religious beliefs. It is up to us to stop this madness, to stop the hate, the division, and the violence. We have a duty to remove activism and ideology from our classrooms and our schools and this dais. We must lead by example, showing what it means to respect diversity of thought, belief, faith. Charlie said, "When people stop talking, that's when you get violence. That's when civil war happens, because you start to think the other side is so evil, they lose their humanity." I've said many times, "We can't solve problems if we don't talk." I'm asking this board and the community to commit to talking, to listening, and to respecting each other. This is how we end division and hate. This is how we stop the violence. This is how we fulfill the promise of liberty and justice for all made on September 17, 1787."
Alexandra?
So, I am on the, so the Joint Insurance Committee is the committee that looks at the, basically, insurance for all the employees of the district. And we meet from September through the spring of each year. So, we just had our first meeting a week or so ago. And it is always interesting and not entirely delightful, unfortunately. Insurance rates are continuing to rise. We had, last year, as some of you may recall, we had, I think the insurance rates went up about 13% for our district, which accounted to $2 million for renewal, which the district funded, because we pay for the insurance of our employees, our full-time employees. And so, we were hoping for things to kind of ease off a little bit. And it's, and they're, they're not quite yet. And so, it was, it was not a sunny meeting, but hopefully, things will ease up a little bit. It's always really interesting in looking at, looking at, you know, we look at utilization, so how, how many people are using insurance, the cost of insurance claims versus the amount of that's getting paid in. And so, that was, that was interesting. And we'll continue looking at that through, through the next few months until it's time. Our renewal is always in July of every year. And so, we look at it through sort of the next few months. And then, by the time the spring comes, we're ready for, to see what happens in July. So, hopefully, things will get a little bit better. And then, I'm also excited, I'm on the Calendar Committee, which meets only every two years. And so, last year was an off year, but I'm excited that we'll be starting up with that again in the next couple of weeks to make the calendar for the next, the next two years, so '26, '27, and then '27, '28. So, that's always sort of fun to, a big, a big puzzle as well to look at how to fit everything in and make it all work out. So, I'm looking forward to starting that up again as well.
Your fall will be busy. Denise?
I had the opportunity to attend the Head Start Family Pie. And pie stands for Partnering in Education group, first meeting of the year. And it was a traditional business meeting, getting, well, first, it started with pizza. Pizza pie, pie meeting, and concluded with actual pie. So, a really nice way for families and educators in the early childhood program to connect before the school year got too far underway. And after electing officers for the year and talking about priorities, we also had the opportunity to learn that the national, or sorry, regional Head Start Conference is going to be in Denver this year. So, we'll be taking a number of staff members, as well as parents, to this very valuable opportunity to learn more and bring additional knowledge and information back into the district. And so, that was, I think, exciting for everybody, that this would be supported by the schools. And then, covered how to use the social emotional curriculum that's being used in the classroom at home. And so, the take-home part of it. And they discussed how to encourage all parents and participants in the, in the early childhood program to be taking advantage of, of the resources that are being sent home. It was a great opportunity to see parents at the beginning of their, their journey with TSD and with their children's education. Really excited about participating and helping their kids learn.
Thank you. I'm glad you went to that. All right, that, oh, there's one call in. Is that correct? Did we not? Excuse me. Yes. Did we not, excuse me, yes. A little warp brain. It's the end of our reports, and we're moving on to public comment.
Because the board, because the board wants to hear the viewpoints of the public and also needs to conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner, it will schedule time between, during its regular board meetings for brief comments and questions from the public. The board will set a time for public participation prior to the business portion of the meeting. The time for each speaker will be limited to three minutes, and each individual will only be recognized once. If there is a large number of speakers, the board may elect to take comments for one hour before the business meeting and conclude public comment after the business meeting. Public comments and questions at a regular meeting may deal with any topics related to the board's conduct of the schools. Speakers may offer such criticism of school operations and programs as concern them, but are encouraged to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Speaker remarks should be suitable for an audience and includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. Personnel matters will be discussed in executive sessions. Finally, as a reminder to all present, the board and staff do not respond to public comment. This is our opportunity to hear from students, parents, and patrons. The board may discuss public comments later in the agenda or on future agendas. I'll call you up, and then we have a new system that will be right in front of you for the timer. First up, we have Carrie Walters.
Hello. My name is Carrie Walters. My pronouns are she/her. My husband and I have four kids that have gone through with the Berthold Schools. Our youngest graduated in May. When one of our kids was 12, the school called to let us know our child was having suicidal ideations, and we took them to MCR. After several hours in the ER, the hospital found a place for them at Denver Health where they would spend a week. One of the scariest moments of my life was watching my child being loaded in an ambulance for the ride from Loveland to Denver. We couldn't go with them, we felt helpless. It was then I vowed to make sure that whatever was hurting them so much that they wanted to die was going to be my mission to help them live. Our child was assigned female at birth. I dressed my baby in pink, I grew her hair long enough for curls and ponytails and pierced hairs. There was no shortage of dollhouses and play kitchen sets in our home. I did all the girl things such as tea parties and princess dress-up. The baby was named a very girl name. It fit their personality, bubbly, cheerful, and sweet, but at 12, they were no longer bubbly and cheerful. The psychiatrist at Denver Health helped our child unravel the dark thoughts in their brain and find a root cause for the scary thoughts. Our child was afraid to tell us who they were. My great aunt Margie was born in 1921. She lived her life as a single woman and made a career in the Army. I inherited her treasured photo album, which left me with more questions than answers about who she was. She had to hide who she was. I spoke with her 85-year-old cousin about her, and he said, quote, "She was born in the wrong body." So for at least 100 years in my family, there is a history of LGBTQ+ loved ones. My child is not the first one in my family to be born in the wrong body. People who were born in the wrong bodies still deserve our respect. They still have positive contributions to make to society and the world. The same kid that wanted to die is now in their second semester of college studying biology. They achieved all As in their first semester. I'm proud to be their mom. They're going to make a positive mark in the world, and I thank Thompson School District and its inclusivity, I knew I was going to screw that word up, inclusivity and understanding of their students. My kid had some fantastic, open-minded teachers at BHS. Then that would not have been possible without a supportive school board. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Tara Hildebrand, and my kids went first to Big T, then to Bill Reed, and then to Thompson Valley. And my youngest one is now at Ithaca College doing great, and my second one, or my first one, just graduated, so from college. And I read this this week, I'm not great with numbers, so it helped me. So they were saying, if you had 400 people in a room, 85 are illiterate, 48 live in poverty, 40 have untreated mental illness, 36 don't have health insurance, and 2 are transgender. So you guys obviously have a lot on your plate, but one of my children is transgender. So I really, really appreciate your policies of inclusivity and safety for all. And I wanted to thank Nancy for a statement you made on your Facebook page and for the TSD where it was, "Our focus," it was all bolded and kept, "our focus must be on providing a safe environment where women feel empowered to share their stories and where due process can take place so that justice is ultimately served for everyone." And I love that that is the policy of the school district, that everybody is treated fairly and a safe environment is for all, which really made me excited about Ms. Rasmussen's statement that you shared earlier about the inclusivity of all the students in the district. So, I just wanted, so the unified statement of this school district helps clarify the perceptions of injustice, I think, sometimes. And so my youngest, while she is at Thompson Valley, was being bullied, and so I had her just look on the website, research her guys' policies on bullying, and take it to the school. And when she got there, the administration was confused about the policy because it wasn't their policy. And it really hurt the whole process of her communicating with her teachers and the administration about how she felt she was being bullied because since the policy didn't match up with what she had read on the website, it caused a lot of confusion. And I know our perceptions are not always the truth, but just having a clear, concise, unified policy, I think, helps clear up a lot of those perceptions of injustice. And so I just ask for the board members to maybe get a very, to check in with all the schools and make sure that those are clear and concise. And I know I've heard some talk from the immigrant community in town that each school has a different policy on how they treat the ICE situations and what happens within the school there. So, and that might be a perception as well. So would I just say sometimes the, a unified declaration of what the school district is supporting is really helpful to the entire community, because then we know where we stand, and it's not just one school versus another school. So thank you very much again for supporting our students.
Michelle Coons?
Hello, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Heller. I'm Michelle Coons. I'm from Berthold, Colorado, and I'm a counselor at Berthold High School. I'm here to let you know of a time-consuming task that high school counselors have been completing each year and to offer a solution as to how it can be simplified before even second semester begins. The task is ensuring each senior has met ELA and math competencies when they haven't met the required scores for their SAT. In case you're not familiar with what I'm referring to, all high school students in Colorado are required to meet ELA and math competencies prior to graduation using a menu of options provided by CDE. In the 2017-2018 school year, many districts pared down this menu by embedding the competencies within the scope and sequence of ELA and math classes or individual classes required for graduation. A solution for streamlining this task has been requested by counselors to district administration at least once per year since 2020 to the 2021 school year. While I appreciate having a variety of options to help students meet these competencies, it is a tedious process to check and recheck how a student has met them. The capstone option currently offered can only be met with English 12 or Advanced Algebra, Semester II, to be specific, and these classes can only be taken at the brick-and-mortar school. Online English 12 and Financial Math and more advanced ELA and math classes don't qualify for this competency, for this capstone. I've sent you transcripts and academic progress reports of two students from Berthold High School. Their personal identifying information has been removed. Have these students met competencies just by looking at their transcript or the Academic Plan Progress Report? The red rows leave students and families confused. There are too many options on the report, and course information within the options is not necessarily accurate. Additional information needs to be gathered from teachers to determine if these students have met competencies or will need to take the ACT workies. What are the ACT workies? They are a set of three assessments that takes students approximately three hours to complete. Students and their parents' guardians become quite frustrated when they hear that the pre-calc that they took, or the Algebra II, will not meet the competency requirement, and they need to take the workies instead. From a fiscal standpoint, the workies are expensive. Each set of assessments is approximately $40. With the exception of exam scores, CDE has given local school boards and districts a degree of autonomy with how students meet ELA and math competencies. From CDA, from CDE, local school boards and districts select from this menu to create a list of options that their students must use to show that they, to show what they know or can do in order to graduate from high school. School districts may offer some or all of the state menu options, may raise a cut score on an included assessment, and may add graduation requirements in other content areas. DPS, St. Verne, and Pooter School District students can meet ELA and math capstones with classes that are required for graduation. From DPS, from their website, mathematics and literacy capstones are assessed through district-provided performance tasks and are aligned with district curriculum. Keeping in mind that capstones are district-determined, students in TSD are required to take four credits of ELA and three credits of math to graduate, and a passing grade in TSD is a D. My proposed solutions to increase time counselors are able to spend working directly with students and to reduce stakeholders' confusion by being able to tell at a glance if these competencies have been met is to expand how the capstone can be met. Students who have passed four first-time credits of ELA and three first-time credits of math have met the district capstone requirement for ELA and math competencies. Our graduation requirement should demonstrate that our students have met competencies in ELA and math.
Michelle, I hate to interrupt, we need to stop. You've gone way over time.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
But what I would ask is that you make sure that we have the information that you're sharing. I know you sent us something, but I didn't have time to open it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah, so that we can discuss it.
Yes.
The monitor went to sleep, so Mike's going to fix it.
Oh, I'm just like, wow, this is, this is great. I'll just keep on going.
Yeah.
Thank you to our, no, it's okay. Everybody's looking at me. Do something, Barb.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, okay, got it.
Is that it? Is there one more?
We do have one more, but.
Try it now.
Okay.
It's back up.
Nate Donovan?
Okay.
I was really glad that the other ones were going to four minutes, because I thought, wow, cool. Members of the board, President Cruz, McAfee Award winner, President Cruz, and Dr. Heller. My name is Nate Donovan. I'm an employee of the district, but I'm speaking on my own behalf. I just wanted to highlight a few important things that I saw on the contracts above $50,000 at your last meeting that you had that on the agenda. Appreciate the approval of food, and the Meals for All is a really important thing that I think is overlooked sometimes in helping students learn, and appreciate the fuel for transportation that helps us continue to pick up students in a safe manner. But this, on this agenda, is, one of the contracts is for legal services, and I just wanted to highlight that that shouldn't be taken lightly, and now that you've had a couple of settlements that you approved, you know what goes into the negotiation and consideration of those and getting good legal representation is helpful. And as I observed, one of your board at the Casby Conference in December, because I was with the Casby Foundation having a booth, and next to us was Kaplan and Ernest, and that's one way to get free legal advice when they're at their booth, marketing their services, so. It was a long conversation, too, so probably saved hundreds of dollars there. But appreciate that, and to Stu's comment about the resolutions, I'm glad that you all took some time to look at some of those, because some of them sound good, but they're just kind of goofy. And it's amazing how things can turn with well-placed comments and debate. So giving your delegate to the Casby Delegate Assembly, the discretion to stand up and speak is really important, and I wish you all well. Thank you.
Okay, now we have one call in, correct? Okay.
Sorry.
My name is Elizabeth Newton, a taxpayer who lives in Fort Collins in TSD's District C. My email is ea newton 2013 at gmail. Three of my grandchildren attend TSD high schools. I'm here to discuss the recent CMS test scores. Our very own Nancy Rumpel, who runs her team, took it upon themselves to publish raw CMS test scores and jump to conclusions without attempting any real data analysis or waiting for the experts to do so, stating things like, "She was shocked to see a drop," "Stop pulling kids out for non-stop counseling, which parents are not told about," and "Stop complaining about parents but include and engage with them." This is harmful political rhetoric that damages the district, is a slap in the face to our teachers, and most of all, a disservice to our hard-working students. So let's use an analogy to help this make sense. Imagine Nancy leads an aspiring accounting team for a company, and her job is to create financial documents and share them with the CEO for analysis. When the latest sales report comes out, she sees that Robert's sales team numbers are down 5%. Without any other context, Nancy and her aspiring team publicly release the numbers and blame Robert's team for focusing too much on customer service training and not enough on sales. She incorrectly claims that the sales team is not skilled and that customers are leaving in droves. What Nancy and her team do not know is that the sales team decline was due to several factors: a team member's cancer diagnosis, major supply chain issues, market shifts, and economic conditions. She also doesn't know that the sales team focused on customer service skill training due to direct feedback from customers about prior poor customer service. So why wouldn't Nancy and her team know about this? Because their job is to create financial documents. They have no insight into the day-to-day operations of the sales team, therefore do not have the information to make an analysis. That's the CEO and Robert's job. This is exactly what is happening here. When someone takes raw data and jumps to conclusion they are causing real harm, this kind of action is a disservice to everyone, especially our students and teachers who work in hard every day. It seems to me like political ambitions and gaining political points are getting in the way of critical thinking. We should use available data analysis tools and listen to experts in the district before jumping to conclusions. By the way, in my analogy, Nancy and her team are fired for damaging the company's reputation. I say recall Nancy before she does more harm to our kids and the district. Thank you.
Oh, bring it. Recall me. That concludes our public comment. All right, our next item that we have is the action consent items, and these are items that we have presented to us at a previous meeting or study session and are actually needing some approval. I'm going to read the list before we begin to talk about them so that we know what they are. Here we go. If you want to pull anything from here, just let me know. There's just three on this list, but I do want to make note that the approval of expenditures over $50,000, when we had our study session, there were three items on it, and it's been expanded, but all of those are related to kids that are being educated or supported with another program. And so the first one, 5.1, is the approval of personnel, extra-duty coaching recommendations, approval of the expenditures. approval of the expenditures over $50,000, and the approval of gifts and donations. So Nancy, would you like to read the gifts and donations for us first?
Strive 2025 alignment, 4.2 assets are properly inventoried, maintained, and used appropriately without waste, 4.3 provide transparency in use of resources. Purpose: School Board policy states that gifts and donations over $1,000 need to be approved by the Board of Education. See below for the gift and donation, donations for the amount and purpose. A donation of $6,910 for materials for woodshop and construction classes from Wes Brown with Benchcraft Custom Millwork, Inc. A donation of $1,555 for music supplies and transportation to the senior facilities from Peter R. Marsh Foundation for Bill Reed Middle School. And a donation of five automated external defibrillators, AEDs, valued at $5,000 for all high schools from the Denver Broncos Foundation.
All right, we appreciate those donations for our schools. Thank you, Nancy. All right, I would ask for approval of the special action consent items so we can.
I move.
Okay.
Second.
In a second. All right, so it's Nancy and then Alexandra. So it's just for those three items that we talked about. Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessum.
Aye.
Nancy Remphel.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, then we move on to discussion action items, and these are ones that we toyed with last time when we had our meeting, our study session, and so we're just going to clarify them. The first one is the approval of the second reading of policy BEDB agenda, and that was the result of our conversation at our retreat. Did you want to add anything?
Yes, I would just add the only real change from, did you do it, Barb?
Yes, I just, just about.
Based on our, our last meeting, just made a couple of tweaks just to make sure that the action consent area was very clear, based on some comments made by members of the board. So that's the only change since last reading.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments about it? Okay, I would like a motion to approve the second reading of policy BEDB agenda.
So.
Second.
Okay, Stu, and then Dawn. All right, Laura Lee, would you please call the roll?
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessum.
Aye.
Nancy Remphel.
Aye.
I think this will really kind of clean up our minutes and our flow of the meeting will be a little bit easier. All right, the second one is 6.2, and it's the approval of the second reading policy KLG relations with state and federal agencies. And does anybody have any questions or discussion they want to make about that?
Is this one, is this any different from the one we did at our study session?
This one does not have any, any changes. The other one has, the changes, the regulation has changed. This one is essentially identical.
Okay, okay. Anybody have any comments or worries? Okay, I will take a motion to approve the second reading of policy KLG relations with state and federal agencies. Discussion?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All right, Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Who was the motion by? I don't think we had a motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion if someone wants a second.
I was reading the whole title, and that kind of threw her off. Okay, so we need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Denise, I mean Alexandra. All right, everybody happy with that? Got everything? All right, Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessum.
Aye.
Nancy Remphel.
Aye.
Thank you. That one also carries. All right, last one is 6.3, approval of the second reading regulation KLGR relations with state and federal agencies, records procedures. Anything we need to add?
Well, I will add, and Sarah's here as well if there's questions. The only real change was based on a request that was made at the last meeting in regards to how do we handle when one of these individuals is on site and they do not have proper identification and/or warrants or subpoenas. So there is one area that is added related to that, that essentially would allow the school, if necessary, to move into our safety protocols because that individual is there trying to request either students or staff without having proper identification or those proper, proper documentation.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions that they have for Sarah or?
You know, I do have one, and it's not something that came up before, but in reading it this time around, I wondered if there's any bandwidth problems that happen because there's two people that can be notified? Because I do know that in some communities, there's large efforts that happen all at the same time. And so I wondered if you guys had already talked about that and you felt like this is something that you're, you know, that you guys could cover in a case like that, or if that would be something that we might want to, we might need at some point.
Where are you referring to it?
It is.
I think one of the things that we're referring to is that essentially when there's a, one of these concerns, the building administration team is going to call and speak to Joe essentially about what's going on so that he can help make sure they're navigating it correctly. And the question is, if there was a large-scale effort all at once, do we have enough bandwidth at the security team to handle that?
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Heller. Thank you for your question. So the answer is yes. So we have our dispatch center, so there's one number to call. They're not just trying to find my cellphone, which is good. And then we have our mass notification system that we use. My entire team, which is just over 20 people, have been briefed on the board's policy and the next steps. In addition, we have, we're going to be providing formal letters to our partner SRO agencies so that way they understand the expectations as well. So it won't just fall on me. I'm just, I'm putting in place a system to make sure that our students are supported and we're following board policy.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right, more? Nope?
For me?
Okay, sorry.
I'm just curious, Joe, just in Colorado, not the whole country, but just in Colorado, how many times has there been any kind of ICE raid at a school, let alone a large-scale one?
I don't want to speak to the state. My job is to work on Thompson. I'm not aware of any in the Thompson School District or neighboring districts.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I need a motion to approve the second reading of this?
So moved.
Okay, and this is the regulation that we're working with. So it's approval of second reading regulation KLG-r relations with state, federal agencies. So Dawn has made a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Alexandra. Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessum.
Aye.
Nancy Remphel.
Aye.
And that one passes as well. All right.
Can I just say something?
I'm sorry?
Can I just say something?
Of course!
Okay, so sort of in relation to what we talked about last time and what we just heard in public comments is, please make sure this is well disseminated to all the schools.
Oh, yes.
And you, it sounds like, Joe, you're working on this with your group so that there is one policy and consistency throughout all of our schools.
Correct.
In everything.
Yes.
Not just this, but in everything.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, the next item is discussion items, and I'm taking what Stu had proposed on our agenda to this point. So Stu, would you like to talk to us about it?
Sure. I've mentioned to you before that other boards, not just in northern Colorado but around the state, boards who govern districts of our size as well as larger districts have a policy of meeting with their legislators, people who serve the legislative districts that the school district comprises, prior to the beginning of the general session in January, to hear their ideas for bills, for us to share platform information with them, to talk with them about if there are particular bills or aspects of school governance that we believe there's a need to have a bill for. So I'm proposing that prior to our December 17 regular business meeting, that we invite the four legislators who represent us at the State House to have dinner with us, to ask them to bring bills that they are planning to introduce, and we'll have an opportunity to share thoughts and ideas about other legislation that we think would be important. Since this is something that we haven't done before, I would certainly talk with Casby for guidance. And the other thing that I think would probably be important is that we spend a few minutes at either our December 3 study session or at our retreat at the Broadmoor to get ready for this. After having now been your Casby representative for two or three years and listening to people from the districts that do meet with their legislators, I think this is a really valuable experience. It gives us an opportunity to establish a partnership with them, for them to know us, for us to know them. And I shared with you, I believe it was at the study session, that Bob Ebersol, as a result of connection that I made with Senator Barb Kirkmeier, was able to answer a question for her related to Medicaid for students. And he answered a question for her. She followed with a question or two, and I believe Dr. Heller sent the whole board the email exchange that ensued. So I think we're ready as a board to do this, and I would encourage us to do it. And I'm not sure, Barb, if we, if we need to do this as a vote or how we do it, but I did want to bring it to the board, and I also wanted to bring it to the community that we, we seek to cooperate with our legislators.
Okay, we can't vote on it at this point, but if you're interested, just kind of give us a nod, a head, do you want to pursue this? I will be gone at that point in time. So it's something as to whether you're wanting to do, take the time, it would be on the 17th.
I think it's, I think it's a good idea. I think for the legislators, they would probably be the ones that would have to deal with like the open meeting because there'd be four of them. Or no?
I don't know.
I don't know. That'd be the only concern, but I think it's a good idea.
The reason I'm bringing it now is I'd like for them to get it on their calendars as early as possible. I know it's three months. I, in fact, I think it's actually three months from tonight, and that seems a long ways away, but it will come quickly, and they're busy. And as the legislative session looms, they're going to get even busier. So I had, had mentioned to Barb that I would like to bring it up tonight so that we, so I can make the contact. And I think if they can't all come, I think we meet with whoever does.
Okay, I would suggest for this, that Stu, you just send out an email real quick, a response, and have them reply to you so you have that number that you're looking for.
Okay.
Yeah.
As to whether they're interested in participating? Sure, I can do that.
Yeah, just to get a feel for if they're interesting. It's not, yeah.
I'll try to get that out to you tomorrow. And then if you could let me know maybe by Monday so that I can make the contact if we're going to move forward with this. Thank you.
Okay. There's one written report, the PI Early Childhood Report is on there. Are there any requests for information or whether we're meeting ideas? All right, hearing that, I'm going to adjourn, adjourn this meeting.